Have everybody turn on their videos at this time? Thank you. Is Chris there? Okay. Thank you. I don't know if you can hear the voice. But hopefully, all over, it's my grandson in the background here. I don't know if you can hear him. Okay, so all members are present. We will now convene the January 7th special meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority. And we do not have any closed session items. We did not meet in closed session. And pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, members of the West Sacramento City Council staff will participate in this meeting via live teleconference. To reduce the spread of COVID-19, members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via livestream on the city's website or wave cable. All comments received today will be provided, have been provided to City Council and are also posted on the website. And as of this evening, these comments shall be submitted as part of the record of the meeting. And the clerk will let us know which comments were provided. Next item on the agenda, item 1A, which are presentations by the public via written comment on matters not included on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Madam Clerk, did you receive any comments?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We did not receive comments for item 1A.
Okay, thank you. And next item is 1B, which are additional council communications from our designated assignments. Are there any items, presentations under item 1B today? Nobody has any presentations?
I did. I had a meeting of, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. We did have a meeting of CACOG back on December 17. And there was a very light agenda. I was sorry, I wasn't prepared, but I will report out that there was a vote on the Chair and Vice Chair coming to come new year, they'll be sworn in this month. There was also a discussion on Green Means Go and a vote to approve it, as well as on the transportation planning documents. So those were approved as well. So that's all I really had the report. That was the only meeting we had since the last meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember LaDesma. Councilmember Roscoe, do you have any items to present?
No.
Thank you. You're welcome. Councilmember Okala, any items?
No.
Thank you. Okay, and next, we'll move to item 1C, which are council appointments. We do not have any tonight. And we do have appointment requests that we received by application. And I'm looking to schedule January 20th as a time to make those appointments. I think it was February 3rd written in the email communications, but I'm going to try to target January 20th so that the appointed commissioners can start their orientation, which is usually provided to them, so that they can become accustomed to their commission assignments. And then they can start on scheduling meetings in February, if that's the desire of the council staff. If there's anything pending that they can get started soon. So I just wanted to let you know. And next item on the agenda is item number two, consideration of options to fill a vacancy on the City Council. The purpose of this report is to further discuss the options available to the City Council to fill an immediate vacancy on the City Council following up on the council discussion from December 9th meeting. And I just want to check in with fellow council members. Are there any requests to add any comments at this point?
Yes, I can we actually start discussing because I favor option one.
Okay, just want to, thank you, Councilmember Okala. Can we, any other comments or requests to speak before?
Are we gonna, as a point of order, are we gonna have a staff report on this?
Yes. Going to present the staff report by City Manager. Go ahead and present the staff report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and also Happy New Year to everybody. This will be a short report. I really just wanted to reiterate the content of the staff report over the council. It's been a little while since December 9th, but also for the public, just to make sure everything's clear. So as you mentioned, this is a follow-up to the discussion that was had on December 9th. At that time, the City Council did act to designate Mayor Guerrero and Councilmember LaDesma as the ad hoc subcommittee. The main purpose of the subcommittee was to explore the viability of an application and appointment process and other options before the council so that we could come back to this meeting, which you also directed staff to schedule at that time to have a more thorough discussion about those options. We don't have to necessarily make decisions tonight, but certain options do require direction to council, especially if we're gonna open it up to applications. So just as a reminder, we are a general law city, so we are under the government code when it comes to filling the vacancy. Simply put, you have 60 days from the point of the vacancy to either fill it by appointment or call an election. So those are the two options that general law city councils have. That date, in our case, would be February 7th. I think that's a Sunday. But technically, it's by calendar day, so that is the 60th day after December 9th. Want to be really clear in its state in the report, but just to reiterate it, there is no state mandated process or anything in our municipal code in terms of how you go about filling that vacancy. We have had history in West Sacramento, as mentioned in the report, of at least twice where we've had a vacant council seat. The circumstances each time were a little bit different in terms of how that vacancy occurred. But in each case, there was a process where the council went through a subcommittee, had had applications, and ultimately made an appointment in both of those cases. The other option, though, is a special election. That is the other option the council has at the end of that 60-day period. Call a special election. In our case, we have two options for that. One would be the November 2nd election, which is in November. It's a ways off. We did, in light of that, we did some research, talked to Jesse Salinas, the county chief election official. And Jesse actually raised the option to us that there is a section of state code that permits a mail-in ballot for small cities. You have to be a city of under 100,000 in population. Jesse believes that code would apply here. Our city attorney also looked at it, as well as myself, and we all concur that that could be a viable option. The code allows elections to take place in either May or August. The May option is well beyond the point in time where we would have to have called the election and started the process. So we're really looking at August 31st because it has to be the last Tuesday in August. That happened to be August 31st in 2021. So those are your two options for the special election should be in that there. The cost of the elections, as noted in the report, is the responsibility of the city. I do want to point out that the quote we put in the report is really just that. We don't have an estimate from the Elections Office. I know they're working on that. But I will note that, looking at a couple of other cities that are in a similar situation as ours, they've noted a higher cost than I quoted in the report for mail-in elections, so I don't want anyone to be hung up on a $50,000 quote as the lesser cost than two. It may be higher than that, but I think we can safely say that it wouldn't be as high as a regular election, which requires staffing of voting centers and picking up drop box ballots, all the sorts of things that went into the last election would be true in that option. It would be more costly. So as noted in the report, we presented you with four options. I want to clarify, though, that by no means are those the only four options the council has. Like I said, there's no limit on state code in terms of what you do. There's a whole universe of things the City Council could decide to do in terms of processes, including variations of an application process. It could be a direct appointment that is allowed into the code. But what we did here was we presented the four things that we thought, based on both the discussion from December 9th and the feedback from the subcommittee, were the most likely to have consensus of the council. So that's why you have the four options you have. And I want to just briefly step through what each of those are. So option one is what I described as the option that people have become familiar with from looking at the last time we did this, which was, there was a subcommittee. The city put out an application, call for applications. The last time this occurred was when then-Councilmember Villegas was appointed to become Supervisor Villegas by the governor. And there was a, I don't remember the exact circumstances, but I did look back at the timeframes. And it was a very, it was a very short timeframe then as well. The application process is also less than two weeks. So there isn't, there are some parallels there in terms of timing. And that's essentially the process that would be laid out in option one. You would open applications. We do it as soon as tomorrow. We put it on the website, advertising through social media and other ways of getting the word out. And we keep the application fairly short, really focusing on a few couple questions, or a few, sorry, a few key questions. And just to give the council an idea of who the people are and, you know, kind of what they're about. So you can, the subcommittee could then vet those applications. And in option one, we suggested that they come up with three or four finalists. Those finalists would then come back to be interviewed. We put at the February 3rd meeting, you could schedule another special meeting, which was done in the past. So that's option one. The goal of that process, of course, is that at the end of it, you have consensus on an appointee. And I think that's really the key issue. So that brings us to option two, which allows a bit of streamlining of that process based on the premise that you still have to have consensus about an appointee. So in this option, the only variation is that the subcommittee would be empowered to actually arrive at consensus about a specific appointee. And if they can't, then we would have advanced notification of that before the February 3rd meeting. And we would prepare a resolution at that point to move to a special election. We would recommend, if that case came up, we would recommend going to August 31st. The secondary option we present would be November 2nd, a regular election. And that leads to the third and fourth options. Option three is holding the election by all mail-in voting on August 31st of this year. Pretty straightforward. Option four is similar, but it would be a regular election. So really, the choice between those two is how much value is placed on the ability to do in-person voting. Now, of course, the trade-off there is it essentially costs you two additional months, November 2nd versus August 31st. But that really is the only difference in those two options, other than the corresponding cost difference that a regular election would entail. So like I said, those are the four options that we saw in terms of guiding and facilitating the discussion tonight as the most likely to arrive at a consensus. Like I said, there are other options, but we wanted to focus on the ones that would hopefully make this the most productive discussion possible. So with that, myself, the city attorney, Amanda Relent, our assistant city manager, are all here to help guide the discussion and answering the questions the council has. And that concludes my presentation. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laurel. Are there any questions or comments among the council members? Councilmember Roscoe?
There are, actually. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did receive the staff's, the staff report a couple of days ago. And I've taken the time to consider the matter and appreciate the work of the subcommittee, as well as the multitude of letters that we've received from dozens of residents regarding the issue we're considering tonight. Want to make note that the letters did originate from residents from all around the city, as well as outside organizations that opined as to how they hope the council will decide. I'll say the majority, if not close to 90%, do recommend that there be an appointment of the third highest vote getter. I find these letters to be persuasive and I find them to be powerful. They represent the voice of residents who live in West Sacramento and who believe that their voices should be heard, but are not. I want to make note that there were more letters on this single issue in the history of my being on this council than any other other than those that I received following the tragic death of George Floyd. I was a little surprised. I considered the merits of each of the recommendations. And I realize that each of these choices essentially ignore the request of the folks that wrote in to our council to inform us of what it is that they desire. And specifically, the premise in all of the options assumes that the will of the people in appointing a fourth person, excuse me, appointing a person for the fifth seat is essentially not going to be the person with the third highest votes. Somehow is like not an option whatsoever. And so I have a couple of questions as we entertain discussion about this item. First is, why would we, if we are truly servants of our people and their voice, why would we ever disregard the will of the voters and who they think could lead our city? In this case, we had a very unique election. One that was very close and one that had historic voter turnout. The recommendation being posed by many of the voters and also in my commentary in our last meeting, has a lot of merit. It's economical, as it avoids paying for a special election that, during a time where we're struggling with a pandemic, we have failing businesses and people were losing their jobs. And it's not cost-effective to invest in another election when we just had one just weeks ago, one of its historic proportions. And both the candidates and our city spent a lot of money on it. We also had an election that was largely representative of our electorate, the highest turnout. And in no way would a special election match its magnitude or be more superior to the one that we just had. They came out for, largely for a presidential election, one that we won't have in August or November. And essentially, that would really result in a voter turnout that would not be as representative as the one we just had. It's practical and efficient to choose someone who represents the will of the voters because we would have the opportunity to avoid a long vacancy. You know, it's our job to run a city and it's very difficult to do that with four council members. And we need to get to work as a full council. And frankly, that outcome would be fair because it would breed the right outcome. We have a candidate who was vetted. She's qualified, widely supported, endorsed, and has a great amount of support, as is evidenced by not only the vote outcome, but the correspondence that we have all received since our last meeting. I feel strongly that if we, as representative, campaign in our city and market ourselves as the voice of the people, but do otherwise at the first opportunity to exercise power, it really does send a wrong message. We hold elections in our city and everywhere else for a reason, and that's to hear from the people we represent and to honor the results. And I believe strongly that we need to trust the people who elect us. You know, they cast their votes after listening to all the messages and receiving all the mailers and they vetted and challenged each of the candidates before them. Those brave candidates who all put themselves forward and did the work. So what my problem is here is that I feel like the options before us are missing another option. The one that most accurately reflects what would be fair and equitable and economical. And that is that it should include the possibility of an appointment based on the election results and the third highest vote getter. You know, yesterday I was watching the events on TV unfolding in our nation's capital. And it's, you know, just steps away from where I used to work at the Office of Management and Budget at the White House. And it was brought forth by a group of people who decided that they wanted to ignore the voices of the voters in our nation. And I figured how timely. And never in a million years would I imagine quoting Mitch McConnell. Yesterday, he gave a speech, and a few words of his speech were particularly enlightening to me. And he was responding to his colleagues on the floor who were pushing an effort to invalidate the Electoral College vote. And in his rebuke, he said, "The voters, the courts, and the states have all spoken. If we overrule them all, it would damage our republic forever." And frankly, I see likeness. Just finding ways to justify for people making a determination as to who we deem is worthy or who we like, or worse, who we think will align with our political agenda would be an absolute dismissal of the will of the voters. An argument such as, "Well, this is the way it's always been done," and stuff like that, that's just not persuasive to me. And a remedial course in history is illustrative of the destruction that could wreak havoc on societies that perpetuate unjust laws or weak laws. And even Martin Luther King, who intended, we will be celebrating, said that an unjust law is no law at all. So relying on what's happened in the past, even if it's not similarly situated, to me doesn't hold water. We've never been in this position before. It's unique facts and circumstances. It makes the other examples that are being compared. You know, they're all so dissimilarly situated. We are very close to the election day with high proximity. You know, just weeks away with high voter turnout and essentially a minuscule measure of a difference between the second and third highest vote getters. And we don't have a defined process, as you just heard from our city manager. And we're a very young city, so when we hear things like, "This is always how it's been done," it sounds so magnanimous. But frankly, it's happened twice because we're such a young city. We just got incorporated 30 years ago. So just wanted to, you know, comment about my feelings about the staff report. And I just also wanted to say that, you know, I stepped forward. I stepped forward to run for council. Certainly not because I needed the outcome or it was good for my health. But I was a working mom sitting on the sidelines of the soccer field. And I felt that my city government needed to be represented with a lens. People, you know, from regular families, just who care about parks and public safety and businesses and everyday lives. It just wasn't about politics or aspirations or climbing. It was about doing good and inspiring the best in people and trying to make West Sac, the best place for my little kids to grow up. And to teach them how to put service above self and to be good neighbors and to be fair. And I stepped forward because I wanted them to see their mommy be brave and be civically oriented and guided by the right principles and to do the right thing and to fail and do so in public, but do so gracefully. And those children who I'm here for, they have made the oath to me on December 9th. It's the same oath that I took when I was sworn in as a district attorney in the County of Sacramento and the same one I took in 2016 when I first assumed the seat. And it was to support and defend and bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California. And in reading, you know, the Constitution of California and Article 2, Section 1, the first thing it says is, "All political power is inherent in the people." And in Section 2.5, it says, "A voter who casts a vote in an election in accordance with the laws of this state shall have that vote counted." And I also mean, I take that as to mean that those votes should matter. In the last campaign, the vote totals switched back and forth between the second and third place candidates. And it was hard to tell who was going to win from week to week. I think a lot of our electorate is still confused. And let's just take a moment to ask ourselves why. We had two great candidates. And one of them, the one who got the third highest votes, you've got to recognize that we're in a pandemic and it's threatening the livelihood of our citizens and killing family members and shutting down businesses. And we don't have answers, but why wouldn't the people want a PhD researcher with very unique and relevant skills who is invested in our community, who leads a Girl Scout troop and is a soccer coach and who is fully vetted by the residents and who was so impressed with her that she earned the fourth highest vote count in the history of our city? Not to mention that she would be the first African-American to ever be seated on our city council, which does reflect a lot of what the electorate has been asking for. I'll say it before and I'll say it again. You know, I said it at December 9th. I said, you know, had the vote been different, had 89 votes flipped and it was the opposite way, and the third highest voter was Councilmember Okala. How could I, in good conscience, disrespect and deny and turn a blind eye to my neighbors and my fellow community members who decided that that was the right person to represent their vision? I just implore my colleagues to consider what's right and what's fair for the sake of your community. Our opinion and personal preferences can't take the place of 1,000 voters, let alone 8,100 voters. And we can't start leading our city forward by tossing those votes aside and politicking. It's not about the candidate that we, four people, want. It's about the candidate the people want. And they have the right to make that decision. Though the best way to honor the voice of the people is to do exactly that, honor the voice of the people and just do it. So it's my position that a fifth option should be considered, and that is to elect or appoint, excuse me, appoint a fifth, the vacant seat based on the will of the voters and to the third highest vote getter.
Any other comments, Councilmember Okala?
I prefer option one. I believe it is a very effective and good procedural way of appointing our next council member. I do have faith in our council that they would, they have in the past, like, elect to have someone like Beverly Sandin serve on our board. That is the kind of, I think, prudent judgment that has been used by council members. You know, the community elected us, and I believe that it's important to have option one available to us. I know our school district has already announced in the newsletter and other portals for the vacancy on their school board. And I think this is a very effective way of having a very transparent appointment process. So my feeling is I will continue to support option one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Okala. Councilmember LaDesma?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And a couple of things from this kind of level setting from the last meeting where how we got to this point and providing these four options. And I think, I want to thank, first of all, city staff for putting together the options that we're looking at today. But I do want to make the point that option, an option to appoint somebody, and I said this at the last meeting, has always been before us. And that there is no ordinance or requirement on how we go about this business. And every time is different. Every time, there's only been two. And the one that's most recent happened in, I want to say, March in 2014. It wasn't even near an election. This one is 60 days from what will likely be an election that was very, very, the most highest voter turnout that we may ever see in our lifetimes. So I just want to be clear that, yeah, it's a tool that's available to us. And I frankly take no great pride presenting it as an option. It's one we've used. But outside of having any direct input as a democracy does, which is by election and vote, that was the choice that council used, which I was a part of six years ago. But this is a different time and a different circumstance and certainly a different context. And I appreciate Councilmember Orozco's And I appreciate Councilmember Orozco's comments to reflect on the fact that how we go about and how we go about choosing this does reflect some values that we have about how we trust electorate and their feedback. I was also very clear about who my preference was back on December 9th. So there always is an option to, that we can, that that option is there to make that appointment. And these are just choices, as the city manager said, choices that we asked to sort of refine to have a conversation around. What was also apparent at that council meeting was a very stark line about how would there be agreement and would there be a consensus? And like all things, I was, I was hopeful, kind of as we progressed on the ninth, that we got through a majority of our regular agenda and agreed on most things that we often do in West Sacramento, but we didn't agree here. And it led us to a path of, of can we, is there a path that we can go forward? And I, I think it's unfortunate that we can't agree and see that there is kind of how, how is it that we just, again, at that time, we were 30 days out of an election, and now we're 60 days out of an election when, when, when people made their choice very clear, choices very clear. And so again, I, I'm, I'm, you know, it's a secret or, or great, great, great mystery about a preference that I had because I stated it very clearly about Ms. Early. And as the subcommittee duty was to present options about how we might choose it, and I also will make no pretense. Option five is we can appoint somebody right now if we all agree. And I only call it option five. It's option one, to be honest, is that's, there's, the other two options, one and two, are just a way that we would, a way to get to somebody we would agree upon. So again, that option is always there, and as the city manager said, so are a few others. So this was a pathway for us to sort of have this discussion. And I think it's, it's something that we need to take seriously about how it reflects some of the first substantive things we do as how we fulfill this, this seat. So those are my own comments for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Ledesma. I want to thank the staff for preparing the number of options that have been given to us. And I think it reflects some of the feedback that the community has presented and looking at some of the recommendations that have been provided. And so that includes a process, that includes a transparent process. And I am grateful for the staff for being able to provide us with some guidance on what we can do. And just to provide a little bit of information regarding the subcommittee. The subcommittee process was for Councilmember Ledesma and I to meet and discuss what we were to do to move forward. We've met a couple of, well, we've had a couple of, several conversations. One was lengthy and, and the other ones were brief. And they were brief because we would arrive at the same conclusion as that did in the council meeting on December 9th. And it didn't really get us to, I think, where it would help us to look at a vetting process. So it, it was a brief conversation. So I'd like to turn it over to the clerk to let us know about the public comment at this time. So I just wanted to open up for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We received the answer for this item. We received about 22, 23.
Thank you. And out of one of those, I believe, one was a change.org petition where I understand about 180 signatures were gathered by members of the community, and those were to select an appointment process. And so that, that information speaks volumes to me, including members of our own employees of the city, of both, you know, all their, a lot of union representatives of the city have spoken that they would like a transparent and a process which would allow for an application to consider an appointment. And we have a community that is seeking diversity, and that is the process that they chose, including members of the community from the Islam community have asked for an application process. I'd like to go back to the voters, which was referenced by Councilmember Orozco. And the voters have been pretty clear about their choices. I'd like to take that into consideration that out of the votes that did not vote for Dr. Early, out of the 22,000, there were 14,000 that did not vote for Dr. Early. That 14,000 is comprised of about 63% of the population that did not vote for Dr. Early. In addition, out of the selection for a city council candidate, out of the 34,953 votes, 26,000 of those votes cast were not cast for Dr. Early. As referenced, she received and became the third highest vote getter. However, I take a look at the data in its entirety. And I would like to make sure that council represents the vote in its entirety and not just the singular third highest vote getter. That is not accurate in representing the entirety of the city's vote. If that's the process that is being considered to select, you know, to appoint our fifth council member, I would, I do not think we would be doing the process justice. And I would appreciate taking into consideration by my fellow council members of the other votes that were not cast for Dr. Early, because those votes, to me, were loud and clear. Those votes, to me, are the ones that are extremely important. And those are the ones that I take to heart when I duration, my decision for a fifth council member. And so I wanted to go back first to close the public, you know, comment section and then come back now to council. So just want to
Madam Mayor, if I can step in for just a moment. Thank you. While I can appreciate your preference for a process, that is your choice. But elections do not work on the basis of of, in an inverse universe, as you just proposed or posited, that how many votes you didn't get win. Because by that same logic, Ms. Alcala doesn't deserve her vote. And I, I'm, no disrespect, Ms. Alcala, you, if the calculation you had is 63% of the people did not vote for Ms. Early, then about the same amount did not vote for Ms. Alcala. And by even in your account, there were 10,000 plus votes. And not to mention those who didn't cast a vote for mayor, did not vote for you as mayor. It's, in the end, it's about those who did support. Not every candidate will ever, will ever win 100% of the vote. And it's, that's just, that's just math. So I appreciate your, again, your, 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 your your, I think, and your, your proposal for, or at least your inclination to go for a process. I just, the fact that 8100 of our citizens who had a choice of, I think it was five in this election on city council, it was never going to be a 100% vote for that person. So, but those who voted did, and, and the choices were made. And, and the notion that, that again, that you're going to seek kind of those who didn't vote for them as your basis for, they don't deserve to be here is, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me, to be frank. So I'll, I'll, I just wanted to, don't want like that hanging out there, to be honest. I do also want to say, again, there is no, as, as the city manager pointed out, there's no absolute method here, right? And, and I'm only at this point because any logical person watching this council and watched the ninth council understands that they can count noses too. So if the process is there, and as you pointed out, you know, I appreciated the conversations and, and trying to get to a place where we might agree. You know, I'm hoping, you know, I too saw the feedback and saw a community that wasn't very much in support of, of one candidate. I also read the, the, the comments you're referring to of 100 and something folks who I get, they have a right to voice their opinion too. But again, we're 60 days away from an election where 8100 people who raised their hand. So I'm just, I'm not, just, I'm just not going to kind of be in the camp where, where I'm accepting that premise that you posed. I'm here simply, how are we going to select somebody? And, and getting somebody we believe, we believe would be a fit. I wholly, I wholly believe that we are at a place where we have a viable candidate who ran a great campaign, who appealed to a wide variety of people, who does bring diversity, to say the least, to our council, but also brings them any insights. I understand we don't always you know, the, the notion of an option two, or two people decide is, is not transparent. It's a decision and it's, it, it is, is, the process is transparent. How we get to that decision won't be, so I don't know. That leaves us, but, but my, 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 I'm just, I just want to give you that, that feedback.
As a member of the DESMA, I just want to say that I, I too have a position and an opinion and would like to be able to complete my statement when I speak. And I have given, for Orozco, quite a bit of time to speak. And I do not interrupt her. And I would appreciate it when I'm speaking that I do not get interrupted. I think we can have a difference of opinion on this council, and I think we can express our opinion and explain to each other. And that's the point of this process. I think we should allow respectfully each of us to share our opinions. And so when I'm speaking, I, I, you know, would, I will give you some time to speak. It's just that I would like to be able to complete my thought and my statement. And I do know that there are going to be times we disagree and we're, and we're going to have, and this is going to be obviously one of those times. And this may end up in a place where we're not going to be able to agree. It'll be, it'll be casted as a 2-2 disagreement. And that's what it appears like at this point. But I'm looking to see what we can do based on the information. And, and the election happened where the highest vote getter is, that's the process here in West Sacramento, that the highest vote getter wins. And after that, it's, the election is over. And if we start taking a look at the past election and measuring our results for who we decide, I have to take a look at the data in its entirety at that point. And that's what I'm taking a look at. And although I, I've heard both, both of you, and I've heard Councilmember Alcala, you know, explain that, you know, all of your rationale, I'm, I'm providing mine as well. And I don't think it can be dismissed. I think I've heard from many people who feel the same way, that an application process, especially given that I was voted in as mayor and, and had, and, no, Councilmember Orozco, please.
What? What does that mean?
I was voted in as mayor and
We don't have a strong mayor program or process in the city of West Sacramento, Madam Mayor. Can you wait with me? Your vote is just as equal as anyone else on this council.
I'm not saying that my vote is stronger than yours, Councilmember Orozco. And that's part of, can you please hold off for a second so that I may be able to explain? And that's, I was voted in as mayor, and the purpose of that is to bring more transparency is what I ran on and to bring the voice of everybody here on council. And that's my point. And so that's going to be what I'm going to be, that's what I'm committed to, and that's why I'm bringing in the additional data. Because I don't think that, you know, we, I haven't been carrying on a campaign about that, but I'd like to present it to council because I think it's relevant and it's for us to take into consideration. Now, if however, if you'd like to reject it, that's your choice. However, we have a decision here to make and we, we, we will be making a decision. It will be one either to open up an application process and Dr. Early can apply, or we can take a look at one of the other options that have been highlighted here. But the option to accept without an, an application process, Dr. Early, is not one that I'm willing to accept because of the information I have shared. Councilmember Orozco?
Yes, thank you. I, I appreciate that Councilmember Ledesma jumped in when he did because I agree that the argument you made does not hold water. It's, it doesn't, it's not based on logic, and that's not how the process works. Frankly, Ms. Early got almost 1,000 votes more than you did when you won, ran in 2018. And the, it was just about a fraction of a percentage point between her and Councilmember Alcala. That's what makes this situation so unique. You can't just dismiss 8123 votes in an historic election. That is just, it's blatant politicking. And I just, you, I didn't even make the motion. You just outright said that you would not support having the third highest vote getter be considered for the vacant seat. And that is an absolute blatant disregard of your neighbor's votes. And the folks that we went out there and asked to, to step forward and listen to our vision, and they did despite the pandemic. They went out there, they mailed in their votes, they, they casted their votes in person in those drop boxes. And here we are, acting as if that didn't happen. What does that say about the votes that we got and that put us here in this discussion in the first place? It's, it's, I'm a little surprised, but not really. I, I just, I'd hope that perhaps some of the current events and some of the lessons that we're learning on the national level would be a little illustrative, especially considering that it wasn't only 22 emails that we had received. Perhaps those are the only ones that are posted tonight, but I have letters from 48 people. And of those 48, all but six of them are in support of an appointment for Dr. Early for the reasons that I've mentioned. So, I mean, we can sit here and fabricate reasons why we think our position is fair, or we could just call it like it is and call a spade a spade. Frankly, what's fair and what's equitable and what's right is to listen to the voters. And that's why I'd make a motion to return on January 20th with an action appointing Dante Early West as to fill the fifth vacancy on the city council.
We have a motion on the table by Councilmember Alcala. And
I didn't hear a motion. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I think it was, she said she had a preference for that, that I didn't hear a motion.
I make the motion for option one. That was, that was my preference.
So that, so you said a preference? So let me
My option, I make the motion for option one so that everyone can apply.
Okay. So was yours a motion when you made?
It is a motion. I thought I had made a motion.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Yes.
I think you have two motions now.
Which was the first, Mr. City Attorney?
I believe Councilmember Orozco's motion was first.
Thank you.
Councilmember, and so we need a second. If there's no second.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Alcala's? Okay, let's take the vote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to be clear. I seconded Councilor Orozco. I just want to make sure.
Oh, we have Councilmember Alcala's motion first. We'll take a vote for that. And then
What? I did not, I'm sorry. I thought you were taking, I thought you were looking for a second on Councilmember Orozco's motion. In which I seconded. So if it was for Councilmember Alcala's, I thought you called for a second on Councilmember Orozco's. So if it was not, that's what we intended. And it was for Councilmember Alcala's, I will withdraw it. So can you clarify which motion?
The member Alcala is elected option one.
So is, is that the motion you're calling for a second on?
It's the motion I'm calling to second on.
I'm not sure that's the way it read.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I, you're, Mr. City Attorney, perhaps you could clarify, but it's my understanding that under Roberts' rules, it's the first motion that should be entertained for the most, for the second?
Yes, I, the city does not follow Roberts' rules of order, but that is the traditional approach under any parliamentary system I'm familiar with. The first motion. And and it is typical that you need to use the word motion or move.
So Councilmember Alcala did not use the word motion?
I, I'm afraid just the statement of a preference, I would not call that a motion.
Okay. So Councilmember Orozco's motion is first and we'll be taking that up.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly, Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
No.
And Mayor Guerrero.
No. That motion fails. And Councilmember Alcala, your motion is second.
Yes, I motion for option one, that would give everyone an opportunity to apply through the process we have used in twen- in two thousand four and two thousand fourteen.
Okay, you and may I have a second and just want to ask the city attorney for the process in accepting a second, who can accept a second? Any of the four of us?
Yeah, any of the, any of the three of you can make the second.
Okay, okay. I'll accept a second. If there's no second, I'll, I'll make the second. Okay. And then Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Ledesma.
No.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
No.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, motion fails. So we are still back to looking at another option at this point. And I'd like to add that our options are very limited. And I'd like to get the city manager to come back in and provide us with more guidance.
I'm sure. I'm listening to the conversation here and, you know, partly why we structured the report with the way we did was to provide the opportunity to create consensus among the council for a process. And in both of those first two options, whether it was those two, and I'd add the, the third, which was the one, the one that Councilmember Orozco had motioned, the result of a lack of consensus in those scenarios would be a recommendation to proceed to a special election. Now, there is option two, which was on there, which is really more of a way of empowering the subcommittee to bring back an appointee. But I think just, just being honest with the, listening to the conversation, I don't, I don't hear necessarily hear consensus on that either. So at this point, I would say unless there is some variation of that alternative, you're looking at one of the other options, which would be a special election.
Mayor, I know elections are very expensive. I'd like to now make a motion for option two.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. I do think that carrying this to an election is, is a major expense of city funds. I think we're looking between, option three looks more or less like fifty thousand dollars of the city's expense. And I, I'm really concerned that we're not allowing an application process and allowing for an opportunity for other potential candidates to be vetted. So unfortunately, that's not, you know, it doesn't look like better, no, I'll, I'll make, I will, with your motion on the table, Councilmember Alcala will second and ask for a vote.
Can I?
Discussion, please?
We have a discussion, please. Thank you.
Yes. Madam Mayor, suggesting that we could have avoided a special election and that this is somehow the appropriate outcome really ignores the fact that we could have avoided an election by respecting an election that we just had. There's no point in us having to pay this money to have another election so that way, you know, we could ask for more people to participate. We just had a major election where five council members stepped forward and they did the job that they were supposed to do. And they did it well. And there's nothing more, you keep saying transparency. There's nothing more transparent than an actual election by the voters in a city. Having, oh, just having an open meeting where you're, you're having four people vetted for personal preference of four council members is not as transparent as an actual ballot process in voting. So for the reasons I'd mentioned earlier, the fact that the proper measure of what would be representative of the people's will being the November third, twenty twenty vote. And how having a special election won't even, will pale in comparison to that. We could avoid the, any expense by just honoring what has already been done. So with that, I want to put that out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Well, my only comment is, is that this, option two is a little less transparent than option one is because it just gets to a point where we are as, as a member of the subcommittee where we haven't been able to agree and, and and it just doesn't. I'm not sure how we're gonna say we're being transparent when is, is, not, not that you or I smoke, but it's a real backroom sort of smoking room deal. And I'm not thinking that's, that's where I, I felt comfortable at, at this point.
Well, Councilmember Ledesma and Orozco, it looks like you have only one choice. And that, and that choice eliminates really an interest to vet additional applicants. And so
I'm sorry. I don't, I don't want to interrupt you again. And I want to apologize for that too. I thought you were finished, to be honest with you. I apologize. So if I'm interrupting you again, I, I'll let you finish.
So yes, I just want to say that, given that, you know, you're right, Councilmember Ledesma, it doesn't look like we will be able to, you know, even in the subcommittee process, it's, it's an option number two. Councilmember Alcala asked for a vote and only to, you know, allow for that opportunity, I think. Among council members, you know, there's Councilmember Orozco has a really strong preference towards Dr. Early for the reasons that she's
That's, I have a strong preference. Yes, it is Dr. Early, but I wanted to make the record clear that everything, all the factual basis that I provided has to do with the will of the voters and they chose Dr. Early. So please restate that to reflect that.
Councilmember Orozco.
Actually, they chose me with all due respect, you're on, on a slate. And I have to be very honest. Some elections have been lost with three votes. And I mean, this has, this has happened in California where three votes have declared a winner. I believe that the process is a very good process. It allows perhaps even other individuals who for financial reasons perhaps could not, you know, even dream of, you know, running for our city council seat. An opportunity to become part, you know, of a very open process. And as I said in the past, Beverly Sandin was an excellent council member. And her first, her first time at the, at the city council seat was by an appointment. I do have that confidence that if we had had an application process, we would have had excellent candidates, including Dr. Early applying.
I, I would agree with you, Councilmember Alcala. She was a fantastic colleague and she did arrive by the appointment process. That, I think that the analysis has to revolve around what process is more superior. In that case, there hadn't been an election recently. And we're weeks away from an election where you did prevail as victor. And in that, in the, in the case with Ms. Bev Sandin, it was in the midterm. So there wasn't a measure that could have been more superior that would have reflected what the will of the voters were. And in this case, there is. And I just don't feel comfortable. We're not a monarchy here. We're, we're not charged with just picking the people we like. It's about what the voters want. And I feel very strongly about that. I don't want to spend the money. I'm a fiscal conservative. I do not want to go to a special election. What I want to do is do what I feel is right, which, you know, it's no disrespect to either of you who just got elected. And no one is saying that takes away. It just says that we have a city that has spoken. And what better way to honor their voices but then to say for the next two years or whenever this term is up, that she should sit and make decisions until the next election?
Well, I entirely disagree with the fact that, you know, she, she prevailed as the fifth council member here because of this last election. And I take into consideration the votes, I take into consideration the comments. And the, the working people who here in our city, who we will be representing them. And I, and take into consideration their letters asking for an application process. Because I know, because I, I know they know that there is an opportunity out there for a potential candidate that will not be vetted. And I think that they're, they're really concerned about that process. I think what I'm hearing is, is that they would like for an opportunity for the application process to take place and for us to have an open, transparent appointment. And so, you know, I, I know that we did not select option, option one is still, you know, an opportunity if you, if there is an interest, Councilmember Alcala, put option one first. And that is, as Councilmember Ledesma, the one that if you want to have a transparent process, that is the one that I had voted on first. And I'm still looking for an appointment through an application process that our default now is option two. It's not the first choice that we made. It was, it's now the second. But if, you know, and I'm willing to take the vote for option two, just to continue to move forward with the request, you know, and what I perceive to be the will of the people from the fourteen thousand plus votes that were cast. You know, that did not vote for Dr. Early out of the twenty-two thousand votes. And so, and would like to even share that twenty-six thousand votes out of those voters did, were not cast for Dr. Early. So those are the voters. This is, if you're, if you're looking at it from the perspective of an election, I'm going to take a look at the data from the perspective of an election. And as a result of that, I'd like to take a look at an application process. And so moving forward for me, that is the process that merits the will of the people here today on council. And so if I will take a second and we will take this for a vote.
I have a question, Mayor Guerrero.
Yes.
A moment ago, you just said that the unions don't want a candidate that hasn't been vetted. Could you please explain that?
They, the, the unions have requested an application process. They would like to vet. They would like an opportunity for council to vet applications. That's what I meant.
But a candidate that hasn't been vetted, would that exclude Dante Early West?
No, she can submit an application if she'd like.
He just did and pretty much got, you know, close to the same amount of votes as normal Alcala.
Councilmember Alcala, it's just a play of words at this point. I mean, Councilmember Orozco, it's just a play of words. It's not, it's not, it's not the facts. It's not what I'm saying. And I don't, I don't appreciate that. So to say that that is not the process that I'm just speaking of vetting, I'm speaking of an application process. And that is, and that is the request that they have made.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I
So I'd like to take this up for a vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
What's the motion?
The motion is option two, which I seconded, and I'd like to take this up for a vote.
Certainly, Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
No.
Councilmember Orozco.
No.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, the motion fails. So we can now take a look at other options here.
Councilmember Ledesma, may I, may I ask a question? You have trouble with option two. If I were to propose option one again, and add what you said with option two, would that change your vote?
I'm, I'm not sure we're gonna get to a, an outcome period here, Councilmember Alcala. Can, can you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, so and if I, if you give me a moment, I'm not, because I'm still about three minutes back trying to, trying to wrap my head around sort of some of the notion here of, of who is asking for vetting of, of of candidates going forward and, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to find a pathway forward. I truly am. And I am, too, do not want the expense of an election. And I, I think what I had heard early in this conversation, at least what I thought I heard in, in was an outright and I think this is where Councilor Orozco was heading, or at least I thought, was there was no consideration of the candidate who just participated in the election and received eighty-one hundred votes. And I'm not gonna get into a dispute about who won because I'm just, I'm it, it's just, I, I stated at the beginning, it just, I don't understand the logic of how we can dismiss that. But, but we, we still are tasked with, how do we fill this? And I thought I had heard there's outright dismissal of a candidate who has been vetted, who has ran a candidacy, who, and I, and I thought that's what I had heard. And I'm just not that's, that, that, that doesn't sit well with me. And because of, for all the reasons I've stated before. Is that who, who is somebody who has, again, put service in, in, and, and put our campaign forward to to put, promote values that, and, and receive votes from all over the city. Including some, some of your supporters, Merrick Gero. So I, I think it's one of those. I'm not sure it's still an option, but I, again, I, I don't have an answer for you at this very second, to be honest with you. To answer a question, Councilmember Alcala.
Well, I know one of your concerns was that we wouldn't do any quotes, you know, back deals, you know, with two council members. And I think option one is the most open process that we can use. We have done this, I know, when I was on the school board. It was wonderful. People had an opportunity to talk about why they want it to be. You know, on the school board, they talked about their experiences. It gives us a lot of insight. And there was an agreement. We brought trustee Pizardian at that time, who's continued to serve on, on the school board. So I think the process is something the community wants. And I've gotten a lot of calls. I don't get emails. I get calls. And I, I can tell you, I've gotten at least, I think about seventeen or eighteen calls. My phone's been very busy. So I know this is something the public really wants.
I mean, I think that would be evidenced by the amount of votes that she got in the last election. I mean, rather than seventeen phone calls are the letters that we had all received. And we're gonna go back and forth about this. And frankly, I think we need to stop playing games and quit framing the other as the enemy. This is, I don't think anybody wants to pay for an election. This is, I don't think anybody wants to pay for an election. But my position is straightforward. I'm going to listen to the will of the voters. I'm not going to take a position where I'm playing God or a king or a queen and making a decision when the evidence is right by my side. I'm trained to follow the evidence. And we can talk about Bab Sandin, we can talk about the school board. But what we have here is a recent election that wasn't present in either of those cases. And in this recent election, that was historic, that was very close, 89 votes, only 89 votes, a fraction of 1%. And that's what makes this so persuasive. And that's why I, I'm following my conscience on this one. And I know, because I was contacted when it was declared that Ms. Early looked like she was going to be the victor. And I was getting calls saying that Norma wants the fourth, the, the fifth vacancy. And there's already a campaign launching. So I don't want to be anything but straightforward here. I would have followed the same conscience, the same argument I'm making right now. But let's not get it, like, twisted here. This is, this is not a transparent process. The only transparent process is going with the will of the voters and following what they've, they've decided.
Well, it's a good thing we are looking at, you know, Councilmember Alcala and I are looking at the 14,000 votes that did not vote for her, or the 26,000 out of the council member numbers. And taking those into consideration and demonstrating on this council meeting that we are representing the will of the people and we are being as transparent and accurate with the data that is given to us if we're approaching it on that, on that method, if we're approaching it from that perspective. And I don't consider myself an attorney or some strong mathematician. It's a back of the envelope. Just a couple of minuses here and there tells me that the will of the voters were to select other candidates. And we would like to do the same thing here today. But that is not the choice of all council members here today. And we are going to end up likely in a special election. And that's the result of disagreement amongst us four. And so given that, it will go back to the voters to decide who that fifth council member will be. And giving them again, once again, the opportunity to select the fifth council member, which is an option given to us, which is why it is written into law, which is why our city manager has presented this presentation today and why we on council have to take responsibility and be upfront quickly in preparing the voters to decide who they're going to vote for. Because that's where they're at at this point. And I think allowing for that opportunity to happen rather sooner rather than later because that's where we're at today. Because it seems like we are at an impasse and cannot decide on allowing an application process. And given what I'm hearing today from council member, from both you, Councilmember Ledesma and Orozco, it doesn't seem like even if we had an application process, that those applicants would be fairly vetted, that it would be pretty much a selection of one candidate at the end of the day. And I do not want to waste the time of those applicants, unfortunately. I mean, I would, I'm still holding out in hope that even if we did have a process, that each of those applicants would be given a fair chance. But I can see now today, based on the comments I heard, that that's not going to happen. So I think we should really, at this point, say that there is the third option that that's or the fourth option, whichever. But a special election looks like the only option based on what I'm hearing.
Mayor Guerrero, may I?
Yes, you may.
I, I really oppose your retweeting the words that I say and trying to make them into an argument that would favor in some way allegations against me of being unfair or lacking propriety. You can't tell me how I would vote where we were in a position where we were vetting several candidates. My position has been made clear. That opportunity came and Dwayne Wilson and Jason Scrimshaw and Norma Alcala and Dante Early West and I all put our names in and we were brave and we went out there and we ran a campaign and we raised money and we told people about our, our platforms. And we were challenged and we spoke in a, in a public forum that was sponsored by the chamber. You know how this works. I want you to hear me loud and clear and I'll say it again so that way maybe it will make sense. An election just occurred and that is the strongest indicator of the will of the voters. So instead of detracting and suggesting that this is the way it's always been, or that other people have been chosen, then they were great, or there was a negative amount of people who voted for Dante, which somehow doesn't seem to apply to Norma Alcala, all of these shenanigans that seem to detract from the real argument that I'm trying to make, which is that we should listen to what's already been done. It's cheap, it's efficient, it's reliable, and it's transparent. It is the most transparent thing we can do. But you don't like the candidate, so you're going to oppose it. So don't put that on me. And don't suggest that you know how I would vote were there five candidates before me. My position is all about fairness and what is right.
And to decide here, moving forward, I would take a look at another option so that we can, as we have been deciding, all four of us to meet here tonight, it is to prepare a decision to move forward in filling in this council vacancy. And that's why I am looking to you to make this decision tonight. And it's not just one decision, which is to appoint only one candidate. We had a number of options presented to us. And I think in being responsible and selecting one of those processes, it would help the city to move forward to, I, to see what we decided here tonight. So I think it's a, a position that we need to take here tonight to decide which direction we would like to take. Or we can ask the city manager to bring back, I think, in option three, or option four, a recommendation to bring back, a recommendation in the January 20th, in the January 20th meeting to hold a special election so that he can prepare a report and provide additional information on what that election, the special election would take a look, would look like. So I would like to also put that out there to give staff the opportunity to prepare for that option on January 20th. If we don't look like we're going to have an application process, it seems to be that we're going to be, to me, that we're going to be going towards the direction of a special election.
To Ledesma, I ask you again, if I brought option one.
And Ms. Alcala, this is, Ms. Alcala, I am not going to, I understand what you're asking. And I, I would like to ask the city manager, from a, from a, from a status perspective, we, we, we can vote on, we're not voting on a special election tonight. We're not, right? Because we, you would have to come back as a, as a.
That's correct, that's correct. We would come back with, with a resolution to call the election. We'd have some work to do with the YOLO Elections Office to make sure we have the, everything right with the resolution, particularly if it's going to be a mail-in ballot election in August. It's, it's a little unique, so we would need to take that time to work with them. And we would have the opportunity on either January 20th or February 3rd. Now, obviously, if we, if we make that choice tonight, or the council makes a choice tonight, then that would essentially preclude, you know, that, that is the option at that point, is to move to a special election. And we're prepared to do that.
And today would have been the only time we could have had an option one or two because the 60-day would have started.
I, I should clarify that. I mean, it doesn't preclude making an appointment until you actually call the election. What it does on a practical level, it would make it extremely difficult to open an application process and, and give time for people to apply and give more so time for the council or subcommittee to review. So I think, based on the discussion tonight, if, if we ended up getting the direction that the council was in the consensus point, that proceeding with a special election was the, the call, then, then I think we would focus on that and bring back a resolution on one of those two meetings. So we would, we wouldn't be offering an appointment process at that point.
So what I'm hearing is that we are undecided tonight and we will not be giving staff sufficient time to open up the application process and allowing us the opportunity to vet candidates from the application process if we decided to wait until January 20th. And so we are taking a look at the option three or four for a special election for the January 20th meeting. So giving you the time to consult with Mr. Salinas, the Elections Officer, to help prepare a resolution. Because once we come back on January 20th, there is not enough time for an application process to vet those candidates before, before the deadline is what I'm hearing.
All right. And let's remember, the reason we had this meeting tonight was both to look at the options, but also to, if we were going to initiate a process, we would hope that it would have a, a degree of likelihood of success for actually making an appointment. So I think from us, from staff's perspective, hearing the discussion tonight, if there isn't consensus around that process, then, and then, I, I made the comment last time that we would not necessarily recommend starting a process that would, you know, have people go through all that time to prepare and, and also for you to do the same if, if it didn't appear likely to result in an appointment. So, which is why we provided the options three and four as a standalone, both at the end of those processes, but also something that you could direct us to do tonight, then we would come back with a resolution at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, once again, city manager, sorry, I forgot to ask you one more question. In taking a look at, you know, the situation where we haven't decided, would you still be prepared to bring this back and have the resolution prepared for a vote on January 20th? Do you need a vote for that or do you just need direction from us at this point?
It wouldn't need a vote. And Jeff, maybe you can double, double verify that, but we would need direction to come back with that resolution. And I'll say January 20th would be the target. The only reason it wouldn't be that date is if there's some back and forth needed between the Elections Office to get everything set. And we would have February 3rd as the secondary option.
Okay, thank you. So, sorry, Jeff, just while you're on, do we need a vote for that? Because I don't, I don't see that we're going to be able to make a decision and there won't be enough time between now and then.
No, you don't need a vote. I think if there's no further action by the council, my recommendation to staff will be to come back with a resolution because you'll be running out of time at that point. And so.
That's my point. Okay, thank you. So I, you know, would like to have you prepare for a resolution to be taken either on January 20th or February 3rd, given that we have not decided tonight, and take a look at a special election. Is there any other comment?
I was just going to say, Madam Mayor, I concur. That's, I concur with that assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comment from any council member? Do you need any other direction, do you need additional direction, city manager, from us?
I believe we received enough tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to the next item on the agenda is item 3A, City Council Calendar. Are there any updates?
Hey, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, no updates tonight.
Thank you. And item 3B, City Manager Report, any, any reports tonight?
No reports tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Item 3C, City Attorney, any reports tonight?
No reports tonight.
Thank you. Item 3D, Staff Direction from City Council Members? Not that thing? Okay, thank you. Any future agenda item requests by City Council? Okay, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Hey, Councilmember Ledesma, move. Councilmember Alcala, seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.